Uber keeps sending you pictures of... ...a couple of sheet shovels.
Who?
Uber. Hot, little... They asked me if they could... Because I have to buy them. But I can't do that. They teach us to use it. It's really good. Not super hard. And I've got pretty good. But, um... He asked me about my...
I should.
How are you, Matt?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
I'm a soldier. And so it's... And so this is something... Since my screen... Back on my arms right now. Also, I'll come with the camera.
Just gonna say it. You wanna make sure it's good to go? Okay.
More than anything, we're just gonna make sure that they're your spin.
Right. That battery's good and the first one's good. That other one is on two. Do you wanna replace it or do you think we're okay?
We'll be okay.
Okay.
All right, that's...
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah. I was gonna say, that's my screen, so... We should be good to go.
But... Well, not here.
Nope. We're not. It's just a laptop.
Jerry.
Yes.
We've got a little problem here.
Oh, shoot. Okay.
I sent Ryan... No, not you, Ryan. I need...
Okay, perfect.
I just sent all this to you. I need these... All in there, except the red line, 'cause that's in Simply already, but... Everything else, not this either. Rule amendment process, we don't include, but... I need these other ones in there.
What were documents? And where do you want them under?
All under CKA. As part of... 'Cause we've gotta approve the whole packet. Sorry.
It's okay. They just can't come in and start for a minute, 'cause it'll take me a second.
I just noticed they weren't there. I don't know... If there was...
Is that the same as a PDF to get them in there?
Yeah, 'cause they're... Do you want me to start doing that for you?
Yeah.
'Cause I can help with that and resend it.
That's okay.
The... Actually, the notice is already in there, so it's just...
Statement of proposal rule.
It's the statement, yep. It's the... It's the 163103 statement and the statement that the agency has complied with the requirement of... Oh, man, I got weird stuff going on. Do you want me to PDF them for you? I think I can.
Doing the first one right there. Be careful if it just stays what it was called right now, or do you wanna call it something?
No, it's fine. Um, 8-8-5-2-5-1-6? Boy, that seems really strange.
There it is. I got it.
Oh, I know why it's so weird. Yeah.
And then that open to the public?
Yeah. Definitely.
That one's in there. Okay, so then the next one is the...
9-5-3-0-4 statement, yeah.
Yes. Yes, because it goes... Probably can't be generated at the time. Yep. And then send you the generator at your desk.
Well, I got them filled out. Because I don't think... So I did fill out some...
And the next one is not the notice of intent, not the third one.
Nope, 'cause Jaren redid that and has it in there.
8-5-25, that one?
Yes. Can you change that date to today? So that we don't... It's okay that the other one isn't.
We've got that information, Joe.
Yeah. No, you... I think you gave it to Sherry. We don't have the whole packet in there, though. I don't know. I sent it to Ryan and... Joe and Doug, but it didn't make it. That's all right. We're gonna get it in there now.
Okay, so you want it... What do you want on 8? What do you want, 8-12?
Yeah, or 8 dot 12. It doesn't matter, just as...
8 dot 12, yeah.
Sure. Yeah. Either way. And then let me make sure that's all we need to do. Notice of intent.
Sorry, I'm...
Just those three.
8-12-25.
I think it's just those three statements. Yeah.
This is where she may sit.
Everything's open in the public.
So I've done this first one, the 8, this one?
We should have...
Done 9-5, that one? These two?
Yep.
And I've done this one. And you said you didn't eat the notice and you didn't eat the red line and you didn't eat this one?
Nope.
Did you send me another one?
No.
That's the only thing?
The... If we have the notice... The only thing we're missing is the clean version, but I haven't done that yet, because I've gotta figure out how to pull it from... Simply, it's...
This is what you have in there. And I haven't saved yet, but that's the documents I've just loaded along with the notice of intent.
Perfect. Let me get into Simp... Simply myself, because I'm wondering if we can... Hey, Jaren? Is he gone? Jaren? I need... I need your help. I knew my security question.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go to work in progress. Okay, Jaren? 'Cause what I need is... I need to make... This a clean version.
Do you need to, um, accept the track changes?
Yeah, but I don't wanna... I don't wanna do... I wanna call it something else. So I just wanna copy this and then call it clean and then make it clean, so we've got our red line and then we have our clean. But I'm gonna need Jaren's help, I think, so I don't mess it up. Well, we'll see if we can come up with something. Maybe I can Google it.
Yeah, oh, Sherry's got this as well. It'll come up here, though. Yeah, I'll just put mine in.
Let's see. Simply creating a clean version with policy. Usually after no... See, that's where we're different. If we don't have a clean version, it's not the end of the world, 'cause the board knows what it's approving, but... I wonder if I can do this, though.
Is there a way in the work in progress that you can do it?
No, but I can do this. I've already... I think I have a plan here. Just copy. Go back. Okay, now, I'm gonna get out of here, 'cause I didn't make any changes.
Down at the very bottom.
And then... Well, let's just go back to... Policies. No... Yes. Policy. I think I figured out a workaround. I've gotta have a clean version of CKA in here. Oh, right there. Copy an existing document. If we just try that. No, 'cause it won't do the... I'm just gonna do create. We've gotta, as part of the board packet to approve it, we've gotta have a new... Clean one. So... I guess we're just gonna call it a policy, even though it's not. Sorry, we're missing some stuff from our packet. And Sherry uploaded it for me real fast.
I thought we'd have to approve the notice and then rest is one of the packet.
We have to approve the whole packet just as a... Then put into the notice. It's all part of it.
Did you get those suggested changes or...
I didn't change any of them. I mean, other than the stuff I changed, but it's...
What the hell was that?
Yeah.
We could tweak it still. I didn't see your proposed changes. What?
The retreat with the little four boxes. You been camping or where? I mean, I keep telling him it is for the...
Here, I'll get out of your way. Oh, hey, Ryan, are you talking about the insurance? 'Cause I put that in there.
We need to...
I'm talking about the packets.
We need to change the agenda.
Some of the food and...
The changes?
Yeah.
Now the kids are really...
Oh. I didn't see that.
Oh, that's great. Oh, wow.
Those are the best summer days, when you're just like in the water.
Because people are gonna get tired of hearing my voice, so I think what we need to do is, you need to, if you're going to do the motion, you're gonna have to say, "I take the motion." And I, Dave Bennett, say it.
And state it, though. The motion, state the motion.
We're not tired of hearing your voice.
That's all. You can do the second.
But I would... We need to at least state the motion. Because it's so...
No, but I try to read it, like... Motion to...
And I try to read it.
Yeah.
I've got...
What's up?
I've got plenty.
Do you have a charge card?
Yeah, one right here. Bye. I got... I got plenty. Right here. I got plenty left.
Yes, my first and only one right there, yeah, so...
Guess how many I got? Seventeen. Bronson just had one by the...
Delaney.
Too much?
Three months.
Hi, Randy! Hey. Don't make her nervous. He's on her own tonight. Did Dad make it back off with your meeting?
Yes, he did.
Okay. He's a trip. David, we're good. We're good.
Are you sure?
Yep.
I just put some chocolate in my mouth, not you making me talk.
When you're good, we're good.
All right, I need to call to order the Unit County School District Number One Board of Trustees School Board meeting. I need the motion to go into that meeting. Motion by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries. We are in a regular school board meeting. Please rise and join me with... For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, welcome, everybody. First off, we need to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion by Dave, second by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. We now need to approve the consent agendas. And on the consent agenda, we have item A, minutes of approval, B, payment of bills, C, Black Fork's physical therapy contract extension.
Take that, item.
So I have a motion by Jenny, second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Consent agenda has been approved. Okay, we can now move on to our presentations.
Members of the board, I'd like to introduce Sheila Maguire from Bosse's. Sheila, the time is yours.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me for my annual Bosse's report. I am Sheila Maguire, the Director of Bosse's, and I think most of you know me and most of you have been here while I've been doing these last couple of years, so... Bosse's, again, anybody who isn't familiar, we're a partnership between this school district and Western Wyoming Community College. We have nine full-time and thirteen part-time staff, three onsite Western outreach staff. We have actually lost a few people in the past year. We've lost a couple of part-time personnel, people, and one full-time person. Our staff serve on multiple community boards. We try really hard to be involved in the community and all be out in public on a regular basis. Bosse's is funded through a two-and-a-half mil levy that is reapproved by the voters every four years. We will be on the ballot again in November of 2026. Those mil levies fund our general operations and higher ed, and then we have federal and state grants that fund a lot of our individual programs. Our mil levy revenues had rebounded slightly from a low point, but with the recent property tax cuts, they're going to be less this coming year. One of our biggest programs is our 21st Century Learning Center program, which is, you all better know as the After School program. After-school programming includes all four elementary schools, both middle schools, as well as programming at ECDC and Evanston Youth Club. It also includes our summer camps, which include the Extreme Science Camp, the Camp Imagination, Camp Picacho, which we did not do this past year, New Into Science School, and the Robotics and 3D Printing Camp. Our local program is the largest in Wyoming. That program was the one you might have read about in the newspaper. It was on pause for about a month, the month of July, when the federal government paused it. We did get that funding, which was a huge relief. It was really stressful there for about a month, not knowing if we were going to have that program or not. It's nice to know that it's back for this coming year, however, the budget that was presented by the White House does not include funding for 26-27, so we are really hoping that that funding gets put back into the budget that Congress ultimately passes. And we're really hoping that we'll have answers to that, hoping that Congress maybe passes a budget on time. And we will know by this fall whether or not we will be able to have programming for next year, 26-27. We serve over 1,100 students in our program every year through the after-school programming. That is a huge amount of students through our district who participate in the after-school program. We have data to show why top scores, proficiency, growth, those kind of things, all go up with this particular program. As you can see here, we have proficiency in all of these math and English language programs related to after-school. We have to... Initially, when we had the after-school program and it first began, we didn't have to show the Y-top scores or anything. It was just programs for students. Now, we are required to report on Y-top scores for all the students who participate in after-school to show that it actually has some kind of benefit for those students. When we look at higher education, that includes Western Wyoming Community College, our primary partner. We also have University of Wyoming and Western Governors University, and then we do test proctoring for any higher-end institution that any student here in Evanston is attending. So with the growth of online programs, students taking classes from anywhere can call us and come up, and we can proctor their exams at the Bosse's. Come on, go forward. So Western Wyoming Community College, dual and concurrent enrollment. We do dual enrollment for high school students and the concurrent enrollment. Dual means that they're online classes offered by Western, and concurrent means that they're taught in the high school by high school teachers. So Bosse's pays the tuition for dual enrollment classes. Last year, we actually... This data is actually from the previous year. So last year, we actually spent about $60,000 on dual enrollment tuition. And we have about 80 students, excuse me, who were enrolled last year. We had added new concurrent courses for 24-25 that included American Wyoming Government, anthropology, current issues in American government, and archaeology. This year, we have also added some additional business classes, some art classes, to the concurrent enrollment offerings that will be at Evanston High School. The electrical and instrumentation program, we started in January. Unfortunately, we have not been able to secure a full-time instructor for the electrical and instrumentation program. It's just difficult to find somebody who can teach that, because they make more in the field than they can make teaching a college class. So it's a challenge that we continually have of finding somebody to teach that. We did find somebody who will teach it. One of our high school teachers is actually teaching it in the evening, one night a week, one class. So that was able to start in January. We did have five students complete that class, and we are set to go with the next class that starts next week, actually, as one Western class will start on Monday. We are also looking for an adjunct welding instructor. We have been using the high school welding lab to offer welding courses that the welding teacher at the high school was teaching for us. He's got so many family commitments, he no longer is available to teach in the evening, in addition to teaching during the day. So we have been trying to locate an adjunct welding instructor who would be willing to teach that class for us one night a week, so that we could offer welding to the rest of the community. So if you know anybody who's interested in teaching welding, by all means, have them give us a call. And we would love to find somebody to do that, along with find somebody to teach the ENI program full-time, so that students can get through there at a more rapid pace, instead of taking one class at a time, 'cause that's gonna take a while. As mentioned, we also do test proctoring. We have onsite tutoring. We offer scholarships for local students who are attending WGU, UW. Since 2022, when we started Teacher Opportunity Scholarship, we've provided scholarships to 19 different district staff members and have paid out well over $30,000 to those students in reimbursement-based scholarships, which basically means they apply for the scholarship, we award it to them. When they show us that they successfully completed the semester, then we reimburse them for some of their tuition costs. Those scholarships are also somewhat available to the community members, though we do try to give priority to district staff who are working on their credentials, whether they're paraprofessionals working on their teaching degree or they're teachers working on a master's. Our College and Career Readiness Center is where we do our high school equivalency. We do the Bosse's, the BOSE program, which stands for Bosse's Opportunity for Self-Sufficiency Training. We have grant-funded programs that help low-income parents and low-income individuals get job skills, and that's also where our ESL program is housed. Our high school equivalency, we teach the five subjects you have to have to pass high school equivalency, which is reading, writing, math, science, social studies. We also have to include a whole lot of workforce readiness. The workforce readiness components seem to get larger every year under our grant requirements. And where it used to be a tiny focus, I would say it's now about 50-50 focus between the subjects to pass the high school equivalency and those workforce components. So we are required to go over resume writing, interview skills, job ethics and professionalism, all of that kind of stuff that we have to include with our grant funding now. Program numbers vary a lot, but we typically serve 20 to 25 students a year in the adult education program. It is funded through the Wyoming College Commission, federal and state dollars. That also was hung up, the after-school program funding was hung up. That also was hung up, the after-school program funding was hung up. We did just receive that funding too, um, which was also another relief to know that we were going to get the federal portion and not just the state portion of that grant. Um, I guess they just really wanted to stress us out for a month. I, I don't know, but it's nice to know that we have it back, um, at least for this year. Boost, um, Boost is our program for sixteen- to twenty-four-year-olds. Um, each session runs about twelve weeks. We have over a ninety percent completion rate with Boost. Most of our Boost students are students who have left the high school because they're not on track to graduate. Um, we do occasionally get students who have never been enrolled in the district because they've been homeschooled, and they come to us for that twelve weeks to get those skills so that they can pass that equivalency test. Um, that's actually a fairly regular occurrence. Seems like every year we get at least one or two students who have been homeschooled all the way through until they come to us and want to finish up that way. Um, again, same requirements that we have in Boost, includes all of the workforce stuff. Those kids also do CPR certification, they get sexual harassment training, they get healthy relationship training through safe, um, cooking classes, defensive driving. We do a lot of different stuff with those Boost kids in addition to the high school equivalency. Our Families Becoming Independent Grant is a workforce readiness grant that began in the fall of 2014. Through this, um, low-income parents can get job training. So, we have to, we get them certified in whatever program it is they want to do. We've done CNA, um, Child Development Associate, Substitute Teacher, Office Professional, Welding. We've added now medical billing and coding, um, medical assistant programs that we are working on. The CDL, um, CDL is running in September and is full. So, we actually finally got that program to go, and we're super excited about that and hope that that's something that we can continue next summer, um, and offer more sessions. Last time we tried to offer it, it didn't go because we didn't, it has a minimum enrollment, and we did not get enough students who enrolled for it to go. This time we did, it's full, so hopefully now we can keep running it into the future. Um, so, that is one of the many things that we can offer through our Families Becoming Independent Program. Families Becoming Independent, again, is just for parents. You have to be a parent to be in that class. However, we also have additional ARPA money. This is our last year of having ARPA money that we received. It all has to be spent by June thirty of the twenty-sixth. ARPA money, you don't have to have a kid. Um, so, anybody can qualify to come in, not anybody, if you're rich, not really, but it's a pretty generous, um, income threshold to qualify to use the ARPA dollars. And then we also have our English Language Learning classes, which are Tuesday through Thursday evenings. David Day, who works for the school district, teaches our ELL program. I mean, David can never, ever, ever quit because he's awesome with working with those students. They just adore him, and he's super successful with that population, um, and working there. And again, as mentioned, we have the ARPA programs that we have those dollars through this year only, um, this fiscal year. And again, we can provide training for individuals who are interested, and if they're interested in a career cluster that I didn't name, call us. Or if you're a local employer and you need somebody who can be trained in something, again, call us, because they're designed to be responsive to local demands. So, if you're an employer and you have a need for a specific training, call us, because we can probably work with you and help your staff get trained on that through these grant programs. Um, workforce safety training, we have transitioned away from calling it industrial safety training to now calling it workforce safety training, because we want people to understand it's not just for heavy industry. We can do training for all kinds of different types of industries, um, everything from the heavy industry stuff to defensive driving, drugs and alcohol in the workplace, sexual harassment, um, hazard communication, ergonomics, first aid and CPR. Uh, as just an example, everybody who works at BOCES is required to be first aid and CPR certified. We all take bloodborne pathogens training. We work with the public. We just want to make sure we know how to do all of that stuff. Um, safety, climbing up and down ladders, we do all of that kind of thing up at the BOCES in our Workforce Safety Training Department. Um, we have served more than six hundred students in the past year, with more than three hundred earning a national certification. In the past ten years, we have provided more than fourteen thousand students with safety training courses, with nearly five thousand of them coming away with a nationally-recognized certificate. Um, we've also been providing OSHA-10 training at the high school. Our WST instructor Candy Hamblin goes up to the high school and provides that workforce safety training, that OSHA-10 training, and with nearly a hundred of those students earning the general industry certification that they can then use after they graduate. Um, we also offer CPR for healthcare professionals and CPR for, like, people who work with kids. We offer lots of CPR classes at the BOCES. And then, as mentioned, we proctor exams, um, whether it's for Western, any other higher-ed institution. We do the high school equivalency exams. We do person view exams, which are certification in fields like if you need to take your journeyman test, if you need to take a real estate licensure test. We offer those at the BOCES. We also do testing for law enforcement, for the sheriff's office, um, the police department, the tests that they require their applicants to take. We offer those at the BOCES as well. We do community ed. Um, those are usually more the fun classes that people want to take in the evening, the cooking class. Um, we're working this year on trying to get a book club together, offering embroidery classes. We do writing classes, 3D printing classes, and we also offer driver's education. For the past several years, driver's ed has only been offered in the summertime, because we only had a teacher available in the summer to do the in-person portion and then the driving. We now offer driver's ed year-round. Um, the classroom portion will be online, so that students can do that on their own time, and when they have finished that part and they have their learner's permit, they call us and we schedule the driving. And so, once somebody's got a learner's permit, they can call us. We'll work around their schedule to come up with times that we can drive. We now have five of us on staff at the BOCES who are able to go driving with students. We also used to just limit it to, like, teenagers, but we started getting lots of calls from adults who had never had a driver's license and wanted to know if they could take the class, so it's open to anybody, and, um, we're hoping that the hybrid nature of it allows more people to take advantage of that driver's ed opportunity. Um, more of our community ed we do, we also have taken over the Evanston Women's Conference. After that dive during COVID, we thought that that fit well with what we do at the BOCES, so we are now the lead agency in planning the Evanston Women's Conference, which we actually just started working on today for March of 2026. And we have our Evanston Innovation Workshop. Again, if you want to learn how to use 3D printers, X-Tool laser engravers, uh, CNC machines, sewing machines, any of that kind of stuff, come see us. It's actually really super cool, and it's free to learn and tinker and play with stuff, and it's kind of addictive. Once you start doing it, you come up with all kinds of ideas of things you want to print and, um, create in there. We think it's awesome. We just made these, so we've made dummy thirteens. They look like little crash test dummies, and they come in little tiny kits that you can put them together, but we've been printing life-size ones. Um, so, one of them is now our BOCES mascot, and the other ones, we've made one that's all EHS Red Devil colors, and another one we're making that's Wyoming Cowboy colors, because we're going to raffle them off to raise money to buy more filament and equipment for our workshops. So, they're really cool and kind of fun. Um, so, we will be advertising how to buy raffle tickets for those dummies here in the coming weeks. Okay, so, um, a couple of other things I wanted to mention, that's the end of the slideshow, but one of the things we get asked all of the time, or that people ask us about all the time, is our funding, and in particular, why, like, some things can happen in Sweetwater County that don't happen here. Sweetwater County seems to be our big example all the time. So, the BOCES are all funded differently depending on how they're structured. Ours is just our school district. The Sweetwater County BOCES is the entirety of the county, so it includes the Rock Springs and the Green River, um, communities. Ours is just Evanston. Also, we, as our BOCES, we have Western staff onsite who work out of the BOCES office. So, we have onsite advising, we have onsite in-person classes, which some other outreach centers in the Western service area do not have, and we also own our own building. So, the Sweetwater BOCES is actually housed on the Western Wyoming Community College campus. So, Sweetwater BOCES doesn't have to pay maintenance costs, utilities, upkeep on a building, any of those kind of things, we do, um, which is huge, because facilities are the bane of my existence since taking over as executive director. It is constant, and it's, um, a lot. So, when people say, "Well, the BOCES in Sweetwater County pays for all these kids to take this many college classes. Why can't you do that?" For a lot of those reasons, we contract with Western to be here, so we have to pay them to offer those onsite services. We have to maintain our building, pay our utilities, all of those kind of things that the Sweetwater County BOCES does not have to do, and their half a mil, which is what their BOCES has, they have half a mil, we have two-and-a-half mils. Their half mil brought in more money last year than our two-and-a-half mils, because they have the mines and it's the entire county rather than just the single school district. And I bring all this up because that's what we get asked all the time, is how come they can do this and you guys can't? Our funding structure is dramatically different, and what we have to do with that money is dramatically different than what they have to do. Um, I would love to not have to pay for maintenance and utilities on our building, but we do. Um, we have to have a building to offer all of these things in, so that's, that's kind of some of the challenges that we face, and that I think people don't really understand about the differences between all the BOCES, because they're not all the same. To my knowledge, we're one of the few that is structured the way we are, where it's just one school district and a community college, and not multiple school districts and a community college. Um, and other BOCES have also gotten, like, you can pursue a vocational mil levy of an additional two mils that we have pursued here in the past, and it did not pass. Um, the last time was about twenty years ago, I think, that we pursued that, but it hasn't passed yet. If you get the vocational mil levy, which you have to do in coordination with your school district, you don't have to take that before the voters every four years. That's permanent, if that gets in there. The one we have is specifically for higher education, and it does have to go before the voters every four years. Um, so, just trying to explain the differences between all the different BOCES and why we have some of the challenges and limitations that we do. Um, I want to make sure to give kudos to the school district. That after-school program wouldn't exist like it does without the transportation and working with food services to get snacks, and all of the staff who stay late every day and teach, and then teach in the summer, um, wouldn't happen without that. And also, the school district works with us on all of our technology. Uh, we've contracted the district for all of our IT needs at the BOCES, and having Jaren and Jared and Bill to call on a regular basis to say, "What's going on?" They are awesome about running up and helping us figure all that out, and we greatly appreciate it. So, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Um, in a couple of our conversations, um, tell me if I'm wrong, but the funding that you got from Century Twenty-One now is less than what it has been, correct?
It is, and that's largely because pretty much every year, so all of our federal government grants operate on a reimbursement basis. They tell us how much our award can be maximum, and then every month, we have to submit our receipts, and then they pay us back for what we spend. And some programs throughout the state do not spend everything that they were allocated, because if you can't spend it on what's allowable within the grant, you just don't get that money. So, what happens is the state will call, will reach out to other programs and say, "We had a program that didn't spend all their money. If you feel like you can spend it, send us a proposal for what you're going to spend it on," and then they'll award us additional money. For years and years and years and years, our program has gotten additional money, because it seems like every time they reach out and say, "Do you have an idea?", we come back with a proposal and say, "We'd like to buy 3D printers for each of the elementary schools. We'd like to buy the Charlie Cart portable kitchens for each of the schools. We'd like to do this. We'd like to add another camp." Every year, we have done that, and we have gotten the money. This year, we never got the call saying there was a district that didn't spend the money, so all we got was what we were initially allocated, um, which, you know, is great, but we, we had, every year, we had extra money, and this year, we did not get extra money to do that kind of stuff with.
Okay. So, if the mil's going to be on the ballot next year...
November twenty-sixth, yes.
If it doesn't pass, what happens?
We're in trouble.
We are. Dave said, "We're in trouble."
We were.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the money to operate without that. All of our grants...
Yeah.
Are for specific programs. We can't use grant funding to pay the utilities, or pay our front desk staff, or pay our liability insurance. All of those things that we have to have to exist have to come out of the mil levy. Our grants don't allow us to do that.
So, mil levies every four years?
Every four years, yes.
And we've done it for how many years now, then? What do you think?
Um, it's our, it'll be forty years next year. It's our fortieth, the BOCES fortieth birthday.
Always passed, haven't we?
Initially, it's like, Learning Center, it's always passed, yeah.
So, what are some members of the board?
A point-five of that mil is automatic.
Yes.
We don't have to go to the voters for that. Um, the two mils is not...
Yes.
So, you'd have to operate on half a mil.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, not going to work.
So... And is the diaper bank through you guys too?
So, we allow, we let, we work with the United Way Diaper Bank. Um, they use an office in the building, and we consider it like an in-kind donation to that program, because we think it's important for the community, and we had a room that they could use, so...
Yeah.
They use the BOCES and do that once a month, and we have an office that's just stacked wall-to-ceiling with diapers and wipes, so, yeah.
So, you mentioned the vocational mil, and you said it was twenty years ago, the last time it was put on a ballot?
It's been a while, the last time, and I think Dave was involved with Mike of coming up with a plan to pursue it, and it did not pass.
Is there a reason it did not?
Um, I wasn't at the BOCES at that time, so all I know is what I've been told, and Dave might have more information than I do, because he was involved with Mike in putting up that plan.
It's too long ago, I can't remember. Hard to remember a lot of things.
I know that the last time they pursued it, it was closer than the time before that, that they went after it, so, but, like I said, that has to be done in conjunction with all the partners. So, if the district, if that was something the district was looking to pursue, or that we wanted to work together and come up with a detailed plan, it's my understanding that the first time around, they just went after it and didn't have a really concrete plan, and so the voters were like, "You haven't told us exactly what you want to do with this money, so no." Um, it's my understanding that when Dave and Mike were coming up with the last idea, they did have more of a concrete plan, and it was closer, but it still didn't pass.
So, I guess that, it was just for ref...
So I guess that would just provide more security for you if you were able to go down that road?
Oh, sure.
Because you don't have to.
We don't have to go before the voters every four years. But again, what we have now focuses more on higher ed and post-secondary than workforce safety training. All that stuff is considered post-secondary. This one wouldn't include necessarily like, it's more vocational and not the dual and concurrent and that kind of stuff. It would be a different track. But it is, it is something that some of the other BOSEs in the state have pursued and gotten and have, so.
You know, we've talked as a board before on the vocational side of things and pursuing stuff that way, you know. I don't know if there's any more interest now in society, you know, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of skill sets out there on the vocational side that is lost. And I think people are starting to realize that and maybe there would be more interested, I mean, people interested in it if, if it was presented to them in a certain way. So maybe, I don't know, so.
Yeah, it's something I'm absolutely happy to try to come up with a plan on and work with anybody who would like to on that. We would just have to target it of like, you know, maybe 2028 and in-between when our other one is on the ballot.
Yeah, no, don't put it head to head.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because then you'd lose both of them.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All yours, Remy.
Remy, come on up. I'd like to introduce Remy Woodward. She can report on her foreign exchange experience.
For any of you that do not, should I do this one?
What's that?
This microphone?
It should be on. Just may not sound like it, may not speak English.
Okay, so for any of you that do not know, my name is Remy Woodward and I'm a junior this year. And I just got back from a year abroad in Germany and I've been asked to speak about that. I'm going to try and keep this under five minutes. If I get up to five minutes, I'll be so happy with myself. I'm going to try and keep it.
And if you keep it under five minutes, they'll be happy with you.
I know, seriously.
It should be interesting.
I hope so. So I went to Germany with the Congress Bundesstock Youth Exchange Program, which is a Congress and Bundesstock, which is the Germans' kind of Congress-funded program. And they accept 250 students a year to go on this program. And when I got back home, I kind of like chat GPT'd like, how many students apply each year? And I found out that 25,000 students apply each year. So I consider myself very, very lucky. So I got placed in Neujahr am Grenveg, which is a, oh, let me see, okay. Which is a very small town in Germany. It has maybe, they say it has 11,000 people like Evanston does, but that's also including all the smaller towns surrounding it. So I'd say that my town had maybe 500. And I was placed with a host family, okay. And I lived with a single mom who had her own doctor's practice, so like a house practitioner. You know, English words are still.
She had a clinic?
Yeah. Exactly, yeah, she had a clinic. English is really hard.
There you go, Dad.
I had four younger host siblings. So I had Clara, oh yeah, you can see my house. So this is Clara. She was 14, so she got placed in the grade undermined. She was in eighth grade. I got placed in ninth grade. Because they saw the American coming to school and they were like, yeah, let's put her in ninth grade. They did. And it was, it was good. And then Richie, he's this little one in the red. He's 12. And then Eva, she's 10, and David is nine. And I also got to meet their entire extended family while I was there. They're, they're not actually German, they're Czechish. They've just lived in Germany. So I got to meet my host grandpa, Siegfried, and Yana, which is his wife. And super cool. They're so cool. But the important stuff, but just like the school, which is kind of what I went for. I went to Germany not knowing any bit of German. You know, I found out that I was going to Germany a month before school ended and during school I took Spanish. So I did not know anything. And I didn't learn anything because I, I was working and I'm like, I'll learn it when I get there. Which I did and I wish I would have learned a little bit before I went because it was kind of a, it was a bit of a struggle, you know. But we had a four-week intensive language course when I got there. They called it Language Camp. And I was there with 50 other American students, all throughout the Midwest. I was the only, there was two people from Wyoming that got in. So it was me and another girl that got in. And we practiced German six hours a day, every day, for four weeks. So I got to school, I got to my host family. Oh, I should tell you, I was placed in Turingen, which is the absolute center of Germany. It's their like state. And I was smack dab in the middle of the Türringhertwald, which is the Turingen forest. And it's kind of like a small part of the Black Forest, which was so cool. So that's where I was placed. And my German school had 450 students from grades five to 12. So you can kind of imagine, it was a pretty small school. They built the school for 1,000 students and, you know, so they kind of had some classrooms empty a lot of the time. And like I said, I was placed in the ninth grade with Frau Poel, who you guys got to meet when she came down here. From what I saw. I saw the video at like 5:00 AM. Yeah, the timing was like really tough. My mom, she sent me the link. It was like, I don't know, 3:00 AM. And she's like, oh my gosh, Frau Poel is like going on the school board today. And I'm like, I'm sleeping. I can't watch that. So I watched it later, but you guys all got to meet her. That was my class teacher. She was with Frau Baita. She was not my class teacher. She taught the fifth grade, but she was very cool. And my class had a total of 22 students. This is our entire class right here, in here. And I was shocked to find out, you know, in, in American high school, it's kind of a popularity game, you know, with the social aspect of the high school. It's all about like, what sport you play or how popular you are, who cares? And these, these kids did not care where you came from, who you are, what you do. They were just nice to everybody, always friendly to anyone that came in, you know, willing to be friends with anybody. They were seriously some cool people, you know, and they went out and they had their own lives and like they played soccer. They always did sports. It's like the big thing in Germany was sports. They all played like some sort of sport, like soccer, which sucks because I do not play soccer. So I was always really bad at the soccer games. And they made fun of me for that. They were like, go back to American football anyways. It was something. But another thing that shocked me was the teaching style, like the, the approach to misbehavior in the classroom. Here you kind of send them to the principal's office or give them attention and there they would tell you to sit down and shut the F up and flip you off. Yeah.
Really?
Yes. When you're misbehaving, that's what you got.
Old school.
No, it was, and it worked, so I mean, you know, that was, it was fun. It was really fun to watch. And throughout your day, you stayed with the entire class, the entire, or the same group of students your entire day. And, you know, having four younger host siblings at home, because I'm the youngest, it was a bit of a struggle. So going to school and going to all my friends, it was like a second host family to me. They were so generous and always willing to help you out with whatever you needed. And I grew to have some of the closest, oh shoot, I have some videos. I'll show you those in a second. I grew up some of the closest relationships with those kids in my class and I still talk to them to this day. They started school on Monday and they were not happy about it. They kept texting me like, bring me over to America where I can have two months of break. This is so unfair, you know, because I only have six weeks. And when I got there, the Germans were so eager to practice English with me that I had to keep telling them to speak German to me. Like they would still talk to me in English and I would talk back German to them. It was like a switch dynamic. It really, it got to a point where I was like, you need to speak German to me. Like seriously, like speak German. And they finally, like, finally started speaking German. And, you know, I had free time. We had a ton of breaks. Germany has like a lot of holidays, so you get a lot of breaks off. And I got to go and see a lot of, oh, actually, I have pictures of that, I think. I got to see a ton of beautiful cities, like, you know, the, the things you think of, like Munich, Cologne, Berlin. Don't go to Berlin, guys. If you ever go to Germany, don't go. It's not worth it.
Why?
It's like New York City, but anywhere that's not Times Square.
Lot of people.
Yes, lots of people and the architecture, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't give you the German feel. It's all new architecture. But the thing that I learned and what stuck with me the most is it doesn't, it didn't matter where I went in Germany. The thing that always stood out to me were the people that I would meet. Like when my parents came and visited, I was trying to show them German culture. I was trying to take them to these things and would show them, this is what real German culture is like. This is the, these are the kind of people that you'll meet. And we went to a little like pub in a, in a little town called Lauschau. And there was a train. No, we drove there from there. And we met these, we just walked in and it was like a bar and you could order food and whatever. And the, just people found out that we were Americans. You know, I had to kind of translate everything for my parents and they spoke like a different dialect of German, so it was like a really, I was trying my best, but it was tough. So they found out that we were Americans really fast. And they came over and they were just so friendly to us and always like, the guy, the bar owner, his name is Henry, he announced to the entire place like, we have Americans here. We have people from America. And everyone was like, oh my God, you know. It was, like the people there are incredible. And the thing that I think stuck with my parents the most, Henry said, you come to Germany, but there isn't such thing as German culture. There's just German communities. Because everywhere you go, it'll always be different. You know, the people will always be, people are always going to be people, but they're, they have different little subcultures, which is super cool. I guess now I'll show you these videos. They also have a secret prank in Germany, which I did not know. I'll turn off the audio. So they like caution taped all of the stairs so you couldn't get to your classes and put balloons all over. And they had a little obstacle course at the front doors. So you had to like crawl under tables and hop over chairs to get in school. And they would like walk throughout the hallways and came into your classrooms with like a giant rolling speaker and they would do a conga line. They have the classroom. It was, it was a really cool secret prank. These are my friends. They're super cool. I think now it might let me. Oh, there we go. These are some of the cities that I saw. This one was not in Germany. It's in Pilsen, which is where they make the Pilsner beer. And right, I think right over here is where they make that. I didn't even know what that was until I went, I was like, actually, I think that's what that is. Look at the age old, the works. This is the Rhine River. And again, the clothe cathedral. But yeah, just more like pictures of the people that I got to meet. And I got really close to a lot of my Germans' families. Like the, the moms, they, during COVID, they all had to teach her kids English. And so they would like come up to me and they would start just speaking like kind of broken English to me. It was, it was so cool. You know, they'd always come up and they'd be like, trying to pronounce the word squirrel. Germans can't say the word squirrel. Just the people that you, that I got to meet during this exchange. This is Enrico. He does custom glasswork and makes Christmas ornaments. That was like the big huge thing in my part of Germany was they invented the Christmas ornament. So Christmas was like a giant thing. This is my, my, oh my gosh, wait, this is kind of funny. This is my going away little party that they surprised me with. And you can hear Frau Poel in the background. She was speaking English, so I'll just let you listen to that. They're talking about this kid. You'll go to my class. He was like the typical loud annoying kid. And she asked me to take him with me back home. And I, so this, you're going to see a bunch of flags. It's with all of their little partnership schools that they've had. I won't put her another, or like where their kids come from, from different countries. And I got to be the kid to hang up the American flag. And I wrote a little note on it, you know, thanking my classes. So that's all, that's everything, I guess. But as you know, I set up an exchange program between our school in Evanston and the school in Germany, which has been accepted that we're going to start implementing. So I just want to thank you all for your support in that and, you know, your enthusiasm for sending our kids over to Germany. And I, I could not be happier that we are doing that. I think that the kids from our school would benefit so much from going and seeing a different culture, a different way of schooling, a different, a different group of people. I think they'll benefit from the language skills. I mean, even in two weeks, you can kind of learn a lot, you know. Just the cultural understanding that they'll gain and the personal growth. I mean, my, when I was sitting back there, my mom was like, are you getting nervous? And I said, I did four presentations in German while in Germany. I am not nervous at all. Like, it's just the, the personal growth that they'll gain from an experience like that, I feel like is unmatched. So again, I thank you guys so much for your support. And I'm so excited to implement that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when are we going to be able to, to start doing the exchange? I remember they were over here talking about it. When are we first start receiving kids from Germany on the exchange side of it?
So they were thinking of coming over in September for Homecoming Week. You know, I love fulfilling the German dream of coming to a school dance and seeing the football games. I heard about it endlessly. So September. I don't think this year. It's just too soon. I would love for that to happen. I could talk to Frau Poel, but I really don't think it's going to happen this year. It has to be next year.
We discussed 2026.
Yeah, I think we rock a year out on the thing.
Spring 2026 in June, but it sounds like they extended that a little bit.
I mean, I, again, I'll talk to them and I'll get back to you guys about when they're planning on coming over. I'd love for them to experience school dance, just my perspective. And a football game or two. But I think that our students, just so we don't interfere with school, unless you guys are okay with that, we would be going over right after graduation in June. Because they're still doing school until the middle of June. So I think that's what, when we're planning on doing that. And I'm going to start reaching out to businesses, seeing if they'll provide little scholarships for students. Like the Rotary Club wants to speak to me, I've heard. So again, I'm going to go and reach out to these businesses and we're going to start putting out, or at least I'm going to start putting out like the information about, hey, if you want to go to Germany in June, you know, here's where you can apply and go and ask these businesses for money and. ask these businesses for money and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, that was going to be kind of my question, is the funding end of it, you know? And then also host families, so.
Oh, there's plenty of host families in Germany.
No, I mean them coming here, right? So how do we identify people here locally that would like to be host families for however many kids would come this way, you know? So I don't think we'll find it.
Basically, with the Kappenings. And you want to host an exchange unit? I know that there's, I mean, I've heard of plenty of people who have already been like, "Hey, when you get those Germans over here, let us know and we'll keep them here." Or we'll host them, or et cetera. And again, I think there's plenty of support on our side for Germans wanting to come here. And it's only two weeks, so it's not like it's an entire semester or year. I think that, again, I think we have a lot of support on our side for the Germans coming here. And I'm going to put out the word in my school, our school, I mean, sorry. And we'll see who wants to host it.
Sounds good.
Say something in German.
Oh, danke für eure Aufmerksamkeit. Und ich hoffe, ihr habt eine gute Zeit. Und ja, ich hoffe, das ist nicht so langweilig. Yeah, okay.
Hey, what'd you say?
I said, um, thank you for your attention and I hope you guys have a good night and I hope it wasn't boring.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we can now move on to some discussion items. Ryan.
And to members of the board, just to start off, the first discussion item we have is Rule CKA, Notice to Modify CKA School Safety and Security Policy. Excuse me, rule. The notice is really pretty straightforward. If you recall, the procedures in this, we put a notice, it has a packet of a statement, reasons why, following the law, and all that's included now in that section. The notice, uh, do we need to read through this? How, do you guys want to proceed, proceed with notice itself? I'll read the first paragraph and I think that'll probably help maybe, let me enlarge this. That's the statement. If you get to notice. Uh, Notice of Intent to Admon Rule CKA and Repeal Attachments CKR-1, CKR-2, CKR-3, and CKR-4. Authorizing District Personnel to Concealed Carry a Firearm or District Property pursuant to Wyoming Statute 213132. To whom it may concern, notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees of Moonee County School District Number One, State of Wyoming, in Evanston, Wyoming, intends to amend Rule CKA School Safety and Security Firearms Personnel Authorized to Carry and Repeal in the entirety attachments 1, 2, 3, and 4. Again, just to kind of summarize, the reason why we are modifying Rule CKA is so our employees and any volunteer will have to provide us notice that they're going to concealed carry. We have no control over anyone from the outside bringing a concealed weapon into our facilities, but the law, the new law, does allow us to, um, I, regulate our own employees and volunteers. So that's why we're doing this. If we did not do a rule, we would not have the authority to monitor our own employees and volunteers. The intent really is to have a networking situation, provide quality training to those employees and volunteers that are going to carry and really kind of, I guess, maintain where we are with our crisis plans and provide additional safety. Another part of this is later is CKB, which is Outlaws Open Carry, which is also in the law. But that is policy, this is a rule. So the rulemaking process is, we provide notice, we allow 50 days in a comment period. There's a lot of details in terms, we have to provide a red, red line master of CKA and the changes we're going to make. The reason why we can get rid of R1, R2, R3, R4 is because of the new law and all that information is being put into CKA. So CKA contains all that instead of having four separate policies. Makes a lot more sense. When we originally went after CKA, we tried to dot every I and cross every T and go way beyond what was expected. As we listen to our community and our community concerns, um, the new law doesn't require a lot of that. And so we were going way beyond what was expected for our own employees when someone off the street, all they need is a carry permit and they could bring a weapon into our school. So we're just kind of moving it back a little bit, but still providing high-quality training that's required by the law if you're going to do this. So that's the intent. You can see there's some dates in there. The board meeting in September, we'll have a hearing, public hearing. Remember that if you discuss Rule CKA and its modification and the removal of R1, you need to document that. So what we've recommended is have those discussions, but make sure you encourage them to get on Assembly and make a comment. That, that documents it for you. After this 50-day period, we'll have to take all the comments and we have to respond to every comment. And that has to be done publicly. So if you look at a timeline on that, we're talking, again, several months to go through this modification of the rule. I guess after three tries before, we're pretty good at it. I think we should be, so we'll be okay with that part. It's just going to be a totally different process, I think. I think individuals that were supportive before may not be as supportive of this because we're putting regulations on someone, our own employees, to carry gun when the law doesn't require that. It allows it and we're going to do that because of, we want to provide the training and have the information who's carrying where and have the police have that information too. Protect our students and our employees that potentially carry. So that's the long of it. There are a few things that we will have to modify before we post. Let me kind of show you the other statements. This is Statement of Principal Reasons for Adoption of Rule, Adoption of School Safety and Security Rule CKA. If you recall, we have to put forward every reason why we're doing this, why we feel it's important, and verify that with facts and evidence. There are a few changes we'll have to make in here, I would like to make in here, Jeff and I are still working that out. This is a statement that we've complied with requirements of 95304. Again, it has to be a part of this packet. Statement of Proposed Rules, again, why we're doing it and really what we're doing to the policy, again, in more detail. And then, um, this was the first one I showed you, I think it's just duplicated. But it does explain almost verbatim what we're doing and why we're doing it. So that's the packet of the notice. That's really what you're approving tonight is that information.
Can I add three things?
Please.
The only thing we're missing from the packet is a clean version from the red line version, which we will add, but we're having a tough time with Simly. It's, it's new, so we're still getting there. But that's one thing that is missing that we will add. It's, nothing's changed from the red line version to the clean version. Whatever changes that you have to the Statement of Principal Reasons for Adoption, let's go through those so the board can give us the permission to. I looked in, in my emails, I couldn't find anything that had what you were looking to modify. There is a little typo, but that's nothing.
Are you okay if I share this email that I sent to you?
Yes.
Okay. Under 1A, and I can go back to 1A if you would like, if you want to be that specific, but under 1A, I'm proposing that we do away with the application and approval process. The draft CKA uses language that the employee or volunteer will provide the district notice of their intent to concealed carry. We want to get away from the application process and the approval process as that is not required in the new law. Remember, the big controversy was how are we going to approve these employees that wanted to concealed carry? So there was an application process, a psychological evaluation, and the board went to a committee. Committee made a recommendation to the board, board had final decision. But what the law did away, anyone with a concealed carry can, permit, can carry a weapon. So that was an additional burden on our own employees. So the requested change on 1A closely follows the new law, but at the same time requires the employee who is going to concealed carry to provide us notice. And it's very clear in the law, it is employee and any volunteer. So both of those you'll see in the language. So that's my proposal for 1A is that we change that not to be an approval process. 1G, Parent Notification is not found in the new law, as anyone with a concealed carry permit can carry in schools. I want to take the annual notification of parents out of new CKA and is not required in the new law. We did provide notice in the paper this year as per old CKA. We will still, so in other words, we had to provide a notice that employees were going to concealed carry. We didn't have to tell them who, but just that someone was going to concealed carry. Well, the law superseded that. Anyone with a concealed carry can carry in our schools. So again, it was an additional burden on our employees. We will continue to have the notices at every location that we've had before, that our staff will take the higher road and will carry. So I don't think that's a stretch. Again, I think it's just something that we've, it was one of those check marks that we had to put in the original policy that I think would be better without it. And then, 3D, we will still require a post-incident drug test that is part of a different district policy, but we want to remove that from CKA. Again, as we went through all the legal issues we had, one of the things we were asked to do is, okay, what happens if there's a shooting? Well, we purposely added some steps to protect ourselves, which duplicated policy. So anytime there's an accident, which a shooting in a school would certainly be an accident or an incident, there will be a post-incident drug test. It also required a post-incident psychological evaluation. Psychological evaluations aren't anywhere in the new law. So again, it was an additional burden to our employees. I don't think that was a safety issue. We probably, uh, in the medical issues with return to work, we want to make sure that an individual who did participate in a school shooting was ready to return to work. And that's part of that post-incident drug test that we already have in policy. And it's very well-written. It's part of our transportation policy. So that was that one I request to move. And then the psychological evaluation is not required in the new law, so it has been removed from the draft CKA rule. So anyone in the public, they don't have to take a psychological evaluation, they just have to get a concealed carry permit. So requiring that our employees did it was an additional burden that, again, I don't know if that was fair. We had much higher standards for our employees, which we do anyway. So that's kind of streamlining, so we stick close to the law. Original CK, we put so many additional things in there to be proactive, to counter those that were opposed. I don't think we have to do that now because it's law of our state that you can carry in schools with a concealed carry permit.
So my question is, as far as notification on those individuals who go into concealed carry, who are the ones that are going to be notified in each of the buildings? Is it going to be the principal? Is that something we still got to determine? Okay.
Administrator, it's written in the, in the new CKA. The big thing is, of course, the, the school administrator, local law enforcement, and the notice comes to the district, so the district administration will know. Part of my, um, what I anticipate is the board is still going to see those. So as boards, I think you need to know who is getting approved or who will be, who's gone through the training and that. So you'll still receive notice. So I think you guys are in there too. Not, I'll make sure that's there.
Make sure that's not my district email because I can't access, I cannot find that either. Not that it matters now, but the only other thing while he's looking will, um, yeah, that's what happened. That's why I didn't get it.
You want it to your other email?
It's the only, yeah, I can't get it.
You don't get it in one?
I can't get it.
I send stuff to you all the time, no wonder you've been quiet.
I've been very quiet.
If during the notice period, 55 days, anyone talks to you on the street, grocery store, whatever, make a note of it in Simly, make a note of whatever the content was, whatever the discussion was, so that we could respond to that, just like a written comment.
So later in the agenda, you will approve the notice to?
With the changes that we've discussed.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Hopefully, we don't get sued three times on this.
Yeah.
That's all I had there.
Okay.
Did it move on?
Yep. Any questions at all, guys?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Strategic plan, plan, pathway to excellence. It's going to look really familiar. We didn't get very far into this at the retreat. Probably the part we did is we identified some critical incidents, we added a few things and we modified. But personally, I think it's good that there are not a lot of changes in terms of expectations from the board. So this is, uh, we haven't modified our vision or mission. These are the board goals. Our primary focus still is on a pathway to excellence, which is our strategic plan. We will use High Reliability Schools framework as our school improvement framework. We are invested in PLCs, which is also part of that number one goal. We had a, I think, a really good training today with our schools to kind of revitalize our PLC processes and continue to improve in that. You can see that, really, the only school that we have left to be certified Level 3 is Horizons, and they are in the process. They've actually applied and they have a certifier, what do you call them? That will be coming out and working with them to get them certified Level 3. And then the rest have to recertify. So as we go through the school year and those buildings report to you, they'll also report where they are with the High Reliability Schools. I still can't say that very fast. So that's also the second bullet, deals with where we are with that as we continue to go forward. We really have not advanced any direction with Level 4 certification in our secondary schools. I think that needs to be driven by them. And so if we hear during the district goals that that's something they want, we'll modify that as we go forward with this. And then the third bullet, I did add focus on critical issues because we did discuss that, critical issues that we talked about at the retreat, which includes life skills, citizenships, positive behavior support, anti-bullying, healthy living strategy, social emotional health of students and staff, and accountability. I did add a section on the critical issues dealing with security of students as a stretch to make sure that we're providing safeguards in place for all students and all student populations. There are some, some worries out there with certain student populations and we want to be sensitive to that and ready to act if we need to. And then improved district communications will always be a goal. Met with the radio station today, we're going to have a monthly piece on community chat and focus on what we're doing and how we're doing it. I really think we need to do a better job communicating our test results, all of those above in terms of what we're doing in this community and how we're doing it. I've had a glimpse at our test scores, very impressive. I think you're going to be very pleased when we get to present those. They're embargoed still, so we can't share them. But I think the 28th of August, they're released. And so soon after that, we'll make a presentation to you where we are. Again, very impressed with where we are with that. We'll begin working with the principals and directors and modifying the district goals. I'll be honest, I think they're going to be pretty close to where we are. We're staying the course, we're moving forward, we're making growth. So you're not approving this tonight, but I want to make sure. So if you have concerns, questions, additions, please, let's get them in there. Our critical commitments haven't changed. This is where you get into a little more specifics about what we're talking about. Challenging guaranteed viable curriculum, response to interventions based on academic behavior and attendance, strong administrative team, staff efforts and high level of discipline and professionalism, conservative fiscal planning and budget implementation, and then non-negotiables. I think we have a, I'll say stable is a very positive thing, a very stable administrative team that are committed to student learning, and that's what PLC process is about, and that's what we're working hard on. I read a thing today in the Cowboy State Daily about Utah retirees coming to Evanston and all the reasons why they're coming. The one reason that was kind of, I think, left out is the quality of schools that we offer and how that supports our community. But we do, that part is still a kind of one of those hidden gems, but anyway, something we should be very proud of. One of the things in Remy's presentation is this idea of how nice the kids were to each other. Wouldn't that be neat if you had a visitor come to our school and say, hey, the kids are so respectful? Something we're working on. I can tell you that the changes we've made, changes and additions we've made to support behavior is having an impact in our schools. And I think you heard that from our principals, that we've made some good changes, and we'll continue to focus on what we can to modify our students and improve our student behavior. Any questions about that? Okay, want me to move on?
Yes.
Okay, back to school activities. We talked a little bit in executive session, just to make sure you guys know, you're invited to everything. You're welcome to come. We start tomorrow really with our teacher, our new teacher training, and that's Wednesday, Friday right here. Tomorrow, 7:30 in this room, again, we'll have breakfast, and then we start inducting our new staff. Again, we're lucky to get them, and we want to keep them, and that's part of the process. Next week, you can see the teacher work day on Monday. It's a building in service on Tuesday. Wednesday is our district in service. You can see it starts at seven with a continental breakfast. Suicide prevention training, we'll talk insurance as the number one concern that was in the staff satisfaction survey, so we'll spend some time with that. And then some district in-service reviewing our policy manuals. We'll talk a lot about attendance and go through there. Then they spend the second half of the day in building in service. And Thursday is also building in service. And Friday is a work day for our teachers. First day of school is Monday. So like I said, you're welcome to go to our schools and see what they're working on, contact the principals, what would be of interest to you, and like I said, kind of see what's going to start the school year. But I can't believe we're back already, but we are.
Yeah.
If there's no questions, Mr. O'Neal, you want to come up and talk about the Wyoming High School Activities Application? Do you want me to throw this up on the screen, Mr. O'Neal?
That'd be great. Excuse me, Dave hurt my back, so I'm struggling a bit. So what you have before you is basically funding for catastrophic insurance for each one of our students who are involved in activities. Basically, it's 612, it says 512, but we don't, really don't have students in the fifth grade participating in those, in our activities for the most part. Seven dollars per student, and thank goodness we've not had to use that. It's just a safety net. It's an expensive safety net, but considering insurance costs, seven dollars per student's not, it's not that much. Six thousand six hundred and one dollars for that. And then the next page is, excuse me, for activity enrollment. These are the activities that we are involved in. Nine boys sports, nine girls sports, and 11 activities. As you can see there, they cost basically from $60 up to $650, or $635, excuse me, for soccer. Basically, that helps offset some of the costs for culminating events. I believe that's where most of it goes to. As you can see, some of the sports that have hyper, not only high participation, but also have high crowd support or attendance, those cost a little bit less, and the ones that have less of that cost us a little bit more. But this covers all the 4A activities that we're involved in. Does anybody have any questions?
So we will be 4A in every activity?
Except for football. With the exception of football. We have been, this will be the second year in a row. Couple of years ago, we were down in 3A for some activities. But now we're 4A in everything but football, 3A football.
This year.
This year. And I could see that's not going to change anytime soon with our enrollment.
So out of curiosity, percentage of kids involved in extracurricular activities and how many kids that would be? You have any idea?
Yeah, it's at the top of the page there. I can go back up. Yeah, go back up. You can see.
Okay, right there.
289 in 78.
Yep.
575 for the high school. Our numbers are incredible. They've gone up every year since I've been in the position. It's, we're talking, I was actually talking to our golf coach. Golf started on Monday, and he has over 20 kids out for golf. He was expecting even more, because our numbers have just been crazy in every activity. And kids want to be involved. I said it in our retreat. What's really kind of a cool thing is that our kids really like our coaches. They really like being around those people, and they continue to participate in high Doesn't matter how hard or easy it is, doesn't matter to our kids, they want to be involved. They want to be involved in their activities, because a lot of good things are happening in those settings. I don't know, Ms. Woodward's still here? Did she take off?
Yeah.
And she said that the big deal, sports are a big deal in Germany. I believe sports are a big deal, activities in general are a big deal in Evanston. They want to be involved in drama, and choir, and band, and football, and tiddlywinks. They want to be involved in all of it. That's one of our issues, one of our biggest issues in our high school and middle school right now. Our kids want to be involved in everything, and where do they find the time to be involved in all of those things? They're learning time management, which is a great skill as we go on in life. They're learning that very quickly here in the middle school and the high school. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Talking about involvement, and I just noticed as a side note, our volleyball program, lots of girls want to be involved.
Yes.
But we've never done anything about a sophomore coach, right?
We have not.
Because of the cost.
Well, we, just to interject, we did, we had to do away with it, because we didn't have funding, and we moved to 3A at that time. So it was, it was a funding issue those years back when the sophomore coach went away. The schedules haven't come back to provide sophomore schedule.
You mean enough other schools that are involved with that level, correct?
Yes.
And Chair Peterson will be able to vouch for this. Even when we had higher numbers in our activities, specifically basketball, volleyball, that's what we're talking about. It was difficult to get those kids games, and it became difficult on the coaches, because the parents would complain about their kids only getting eight or nine games, yet they're practicing every day trying to stay involved. And yes, we can still do that. I can still get eight or nine games, and I still do. I schedule extra games if I'm called by, for example, Star Valley has some of the similar situations that we have in terms of numbers. If they call us, we'll play extra games with those folks. But even last year, some of our biggest high schools, and I won't name them, biggest high schools in the state had to cancel JV games and what we call C-team games, where it's our freshmen go play those. They would have to cancel them because they didn't have enough kids, specifically on the girl's side. Volleyball's not the issue. Volleyball, we could probably get as many games as we want, but not in basketball. It's very difficult to get more than eight or nine games in basketball. The other thing that you guys, probably not the time or place to talk about this, but to add the coaches back that we took away several years ago because of budgets, to add those back, it was about a $50,000 savings 10, 12 years ago. To add those backs, back, the cost would be far greater than that.
Far greater, it is.
Yeah. Because we, Coach Fackrell, who's sitting in the back of the room, he lost a couple of coaches during that process of volleyball, basketball, each lost one. We lost middle school coaches as well, and to add all of those back, because that would be the fair thing to do. Because our basketball coaches asked for the same thing. It's not so much the games for more kids, it's adding another coach, another set of eyes in the gym for coaching. Same thing with football. More eyes, the more coaching kids get. But it's not, there's not a simple answer to that question.
Just to add to that, and I think everyone knows how supportive I am of activities, but it comes down to a numbers game. It always will at a high school level. When you have a basketball team and only five can play at a time, and you can keep 12 athletes, it is really challenging to keep 24 freshmen, 12 sophomores, 12 JV, and 12 seniors. You just can't do it. There has to be a process where some kids can't continue on. We have two volleyball programs in our middle schools, 24 kids. They go to the high school, we only can keep 12 freshmen.
Right.
So at some point, you lost 50% of the kids. It becomes truly a numbers program. Our students are so lucky to participate where they participate, because they can practice every day. They do get games. A high percentage of them get a play. Larger high schools, very few kids actually make the teams. For our schools, our kids can make the team, and they can play, and they can be competitive. We're a perfect size for that. Would it be great to have more kids participate, but at some point, you're going to have to whittle them down to 12 seniors, 12 varsity players? And that's the hard reality of that. It's not a philosophical thing that we don't like kids or anything like that. It's just a numbers game when you're talking about volleyball with six, basketball with five, wrestlers, you can have as many as we want, football, we can have as many as we want, indoor track, we can have as many as we want, and we do. And we hire coaches to support those when we get large numbers of kids. But it's just a numbers game. That's the reality of it, and it's hard reality for some.
And I truly, I don't believe that there's a correlation between your numbers and success. Look at the last state championship football team, game that we played in, the team that we had, there were only 30, 35 kids on the team at the end of the year. We have over 90 kids involved in football right now, 912, phenomenal numbers. So is it going to lead to success? I hope. You know, we want it to happen that way. We also want our activities at the high school level to be challenging. And I think that's what gets lost in these conversations. We want the kids to be challenged. It's no longer intramurals, it's no longer, I use junior jazz, because that's what everybody knows. It's no longer that. It's competitive. And the kids that have put the time and effort into being involved in varsity sports should be allowed to participate, but it's no longer a recreational activity. It is for those kids that have raised the level. So that's just, again, that's philosophical, in my opinion. You know, but you guys can always change that. If you want to add coaches, you can add coaches, but it might be some pretty upset people if we start taking money out of others' budgets for those things. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Back's not getting any better?
A little bit, yes.
Got to stop swinging so hard at that golf ball. Chair Peterson, members of the board, moving on. Review update, JJIF is our concussion policy. This kind of, just kind of popped in at the last minute, but I think it's important that we review policy JJIF. And those who deal with this have let me know that the policy itself is very, very good. But the regulation, JJIF R1, has, it's been a while since we've modified it. We no longer use a SCAT 5, it's a SCAT 6. So that's what this was, was we sent it to our trainer, Jackie, she went through it, modified it to what we're doing. We're changing from the impact testing to a, what's the sway testing, I believe? And so I updated it. So if you look at JJIF R1, that is the regulation. And one thing about regulations, and why I added it at this last minute, a regulation does not have to have board approval. But we're going to approve this, just because if you recall the issues we had last time this came about. So if you look at JJR1, the first regulation, it looks, not a lot of changes to start moving down. You can see the changes are SCAT 5 to SCAT 6, which is the test that we offer, and sway medical. Sway is the new test that we'll test all of our athletes, the concussion protocol test. It's a better test, it's on the phone, it provides more flexibility. Of course, it costs a little more, but this is recommended to Mr. O'Neal by our physical, our trainer and physical therapy team. So the rest of the changes are truly just trying to modify that. There is no substantial change to the policy itself. A lot of wording. And Jackie will review this again, since I've gone through it, because I did keep a few things in there that I thought were important, dealing with parent notification of concussion. And then maybe the most controversial issue is we do not allow a parent to overrule the concussion protocol. So in other words, if you're in the concussion protocol, you're in the concussion protocol. A medical doctor could say there was no concussion and waive the protocol. We still require the students to go through the phase protocol to return to sport. I don't know how we could not do that. If we have our people saying there was evidence of a concussion, we need to follow through with that. So that's built into this regulation. That hasn't changed. Bob, anything else that you would add with those changes?
No, not at all. I think Jackie's just trying to stay on top of what the latest information is. I think that's great that she's doing that. I don't think there's anything major in terms of changes that are taking place. I think Mr. Thomas hit the nail on the head. Most important thing is, parents cannot sign a kid's life away. And that's what the concussion protocol's all about. Kids are going to go through it. We're going to make sure that they go through it, and Jackie is going to play on the safe side, which I appreciate.
Any questions about that? So I've asked that you approve this regulation at first reading tonight, and then if you read through it, you have questions, I'll have to send Jackie through it again, Mr. O'Neal. But most of the changes, like I said, were to take... But most of the changes, like I said, were to take just conversational language out and put the right language in. Because when we did this all those years ago and had all the controversy, we put everything in there. Again, we just put some, too much in there. So we've straightened it out. I'll have Mr. Phillips go through it and make sure we're there too. But anyway, that's what that is. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
No, I guess my question was, you were asking us to approve it on first reading, but then you just commented on Phillips going through it. So do we need to, is he going to go through it in the next 10 minutes?
No, you guys know what first reading is. You can make changes once it's approved.
Change at any time.
Yeah. He better get going if he's going to do that. So like I said, that's why we do two readings, as if there are changes, he can make them. We'll show you the changes. Assembly does a nice job to showing you all the corrections. And like I said, we can change the color so you can see what's changed from here too. So anyway. And then you can see an exhibit, JJIFE. That was one of the things that Assembly allows us to do. This is the return to, what do they call it? Return to, Headings Return to Play Form. So it's actually linked as a form. Parents have access, doctors have access, they just print it off and fill it out. So that's what the exhibit is. Any questions? Okay if I move on? Policy JJ, oh, excuse me, JFCK. It almost sounds dirty when you go through that really fast. Just kind of put this in perspective, why this has kind of popped up too. We had a discussion and we kind of talked with the high school principal Kohler and they're making some changes to their cellphone use policy. Really, all we have from the district is a statement that each principal will make a cellphone use policy. What that did, and I saw it last year, is it put all the heat on our principals. So I put this policy together, so we take the heat. It should be us. This is really kind of what's out there. Sent it to the principals, they provided some feedback. Sent it to transportation, they provided feedback. This is a restrictive policy. And that's really, I think, the way most states and schools are going, more restricted. K-8, no issues with this. They kind of did this anyway. So this is truly 912. And there'll be some heartache and want you to make sure you know what we're asking. So I'm going to go through this with a little more detail. Student use of electronic and smart devices, phones, tablets, earphones, and smartwatches on school grounds, at school-sponsored activities, and while under the supervision and control of school district employees, is a privilege which will be permitted only under certain circumstances described in this policy. The unauthorized use of such devices disrupts the instructional program and distracts from the learning environment. The research is not even questionable anymore, the distraction that cellphones are causing and the disruption to schools. The use of cellphones during instructional time is prohibited, except under special circumstances authorized by the building administrator. It is advised that students keep their electronic devices at home. Devices brought to school must be non-accessible, kept in the student's backpack, vehicle, purse, locker, et cetera, and must be turned off during the school day, including the following places and times. What the high school is getting to is this, but they were going to allow the kids a tool to take their phone and put it in a jacket and keep it locked away. It's just another thing to disrupt what we do. It's just easier to say, no, keep them at home, keep them in your backpack, keep them in your car. You don't need a special jacket that locks and we have to unlock it for you at the end of the school day. That may be a tool you can use if a student violates this policy, but overall, I think it's just time we say, keep your cellphones at home. Okay? So following places and times while at school, field trips, excursions, which are conducted during the normal school day. Coaches, sponsors may exclude devices during school-sponsored activity trips that require extended travel and/or during an overnight stay, which they've already done that at the high school. District transportation to and from school. This is new. Spent some time, it was recommended by one of our principals that we do this because of the issues they've had with behavior issues on the bus with phones and distraction it's caused there. So I talked to Mr. Fackrell and asked him what he thought. He sees there's some issues with it, but he agrees this needs to happen. We have some routes that are longer routes and having kids' ability to be on the phone may be a distraction, but they've used it for inappropriate purposes. So he thought it's good, it's time to just say no on route buses. So the way this works for school, you step on the bus, the phone should be tucked away and off. And it's off until you step off the school bus. Much more restrictive policy than we had last year. Let's see, what else? Assemblies, pep rallies, and other activities which may take place during the regular school class. The building principal, coach, sponsor, route, or activity driver may authorize the use of cellphones by students in special circumstances. And I just put emergency contact, health monitoring, delayed or extended travel. Still have to have some flexibility. I can see a coach saying, hey, we're 30 miles from home, call your parents, make sure they're there to pick you up. I think that's legitimate. Then the other part I think is also equally important as you continue on. Of course, the school's not responsible if they're stolen, which we've had to deal with that a lot. This is key. Students that operate a cellphone or other electronic devices with video or photographic capabilities in a locker room, bathroom, hotel room that violate the privacy rights of another person shall be subject to state and federal law and school discipline up to and including expulsion. We've dodged bullets with that.
Yeah.
But it's time that we don't dodge anymore. Unauthorized use of electronic devices is grounds for confiscation of the device by school officials, including classroom teachers and supervisory employees, which includes bus drivers. A first or second offense shall require confiscation of the device to be turned in to the school administration. Confiscated devices will be returned to the student or to the student's parents or guardians at the end of the school day at the discretion of the administrator. Repeated offenses will be considered as insubordination and may result in additional disciplinary action as determined by student handbook and the administration. And probably the most important part of this policy, students can use school phones as necessary. Every school has phones available for students. During passing time, they can go call. In addition, each school office can take messages from parents, guardians, and get those messages to your student regarding after-school plans, appointments, and any emergencies. So I think it's important to state, because typically the argument is, I want to be able to get ahold of me if there's an emergency. They can get on the school phone and call. I want to get ahold of them if there's an emergency. Call the office, we'll get right to them. We've done that for 60 years in our school. So I'm recommending that you approve this policy. Again, it's been vetted by our principals, but not in detail. It hasn't been vetted by Mr. Phillips. I'd say it goes to him again, but I'm recommending that you approve this. At least this will allow the high school to work on their policies before school starts.
Good.
I agree.
Second policy, second reading will be in September.
Good.
Questions?
Nothing new.
I don't know if you saw the, and I think it was a school district in Utah that reported back on their basically doing away with phones at schools. And their number one thing they said is, the kids are talking to each other at lunch, they're smiling, they're having fun, instead of this.
Yeah. So. If I might, Ryan, this was from San Antonio, where Mr. Woodward, myself attended. This is one of the slides they brought up, and I'll just read this top section here. Excessive smartphone use can lead to structural changes in the brain, particularly in regions associated with emotional regulation, cognitive control, resulting in increased impulsivity and reduced emotional stability. I mean, I, outside of the fact that they're distractions in school, I mean, they just don't, it's not a good thing to be on them, the amount that these kids are on them. I mean, it's just, and there's, like you said, it's overwhelming research that tells us this is not a good thing for them.
Our principals, especially at the high school, still take heat. So just, again, now it's a, and they'll take heat from parents, but also some of the staff that don't see this as an issue. Now it is a district policy, it needs to be followed.
And enforced by this.
And enforced, yep.
But I think it's better that, as you said, it's a board.
You guys may take some heat before the next board meeting too.
They're welcome to come find, they're welcome to come find me. They're mad about it.
I have no problem with it.
Want a little side note?
Yeah.
My last year at Evanston High School, I had one fight. Two girls, damn cellphones. That's how long this has been going on. It's not something that's, and we've always had to deal with it. And this, I really think this is going to help a lot more because it's a district policy now.
That's all I have with that. Principals, any comments out there?
We appreciate this work. It helps.
It does.
Yeah, we support it.
All I ask is, Mr. Fackrell, please have boards that act as tables on your activity buses for poker games.
Act as tables? For poker? I was going to say, if we take my cellphones, these students, for better or worse, may discover some of the things that we used to do.
That's what I'm saying. Put a lot of money to me back in the days.
Amen.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Okay. Any more questions or comments on cellphones? Okay. We will now move on to public comments. So if anybody has any comments, they can come before the board.
Your actually have it.
Wow.
Crystal Peterson, 311 Clarkson. I was sitting at home watching the board meeting and I just felt impressed that I needed to come. I should have come in June, but I was with a grandbaby. And just thank the board again for the increase on our base, the raises that we're able to get, the steps for people like me who are veterans old, that don't really have a place to go any further. More experienced, there you go. I thanked Mr. Thomas a few weeks ago, but I want to make sure, come in and express that gratitude as well. And also the, yeah, no changes, increases on insurance. So that was all very wonderful. So thank you for your work and thanks to the committee, the staff committees that were involved with that as well. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks to you.
Any other public comments? Okay, no more comments, we will move on to our action items. So I need a motion to approve the personnel contract for the individual that we discussed in the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Caleb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fantastic. I need a motion to approve the second reading of the CKB prohibition of open carry firearms.
I move to approve the second reading of the CKB prohibition of open carry firearms.
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Dan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the first reading of the JJIF R1 Sports Medicine Concussion Protocol.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Jenny, a second by Caleb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Wyoming High School Activities Association Membership Application and Activity Enrollment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept that application for the Wyoming High School Association.
Hold on for a second, we skipped D. I did? Did I? I did. I get pen happy. I checked it off sooner than I needed to.
You went to Evanston High School.
I did. I, I just, I.
Does he have his phone up?
So I need to go to D. I did have my phone up. Oh, actually, looking at a grandbaby. So I need to go to D. So I need a motion to approve, then approve the notice of modifying rule CKA, school safety and security.
And the packet.
And the packet.
Discussed.
And as the packet has amended, as amended.
So moved.
Okay, can you repeat that?
You didn't want to tackle that.
I'm not repeating that.
Okay. So I have a motion by Jenny, a second by Brian. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I can check it off.
Now Dan is up.
Now. Now we need a motion to approve the Wyoming High School Athletic Association Membership Application and Activity Enrollment.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the membership application and activity enrollment for the Wyoming High School Activities Association.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, I have a second by Caleb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the first reading of the policy JFCK, Student Cellphone Use Policy.
So moved.
Is it a policy? Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Jenny, a second by Caleb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. That concludes our action items. We can now move on to the roundtable. Any discussions? Comments?
I've got one.
Okay.
Just, it's, it is a big deal, but I don't know if we ever kind of talk about it. Congratulations. This letter is to inform you of the recommended accreditation status for your district. Based on the review of factors, including staff certification, assurances, evidence, and district systems, the following recommendation was made and approved by the State Board of Education on June 13, 2025. We have full accreditation staff.
Okay.
Awesome.
That's kind of important.
Yep, hats off to our staff.
Yep.
I guess welcome back to all the teachers and staff this, this week, and all the great professional development happening. And yeah, excited to have kids back in the building in a couple of weeks.
Going to be a good year.
Yeah, it's a great year.
Any other comments?
I move that we adjourn.
We had that discussion earlier.
I know.
Chairman Peterson, just to point out, the fall roundup on Monday, the 25th, which is next Monday, we go to Kemmer, Wyoming School Board, kind of goes through previous legislation, kind of where we are with funding, kind of what's looking forward to their agenda. They always provide a nice dinner. We leave at 3:45, I think, from out here. If you'd like to attend, let me know. Dan?
I'll be there. Yep. Yeah, I would encourage everybody to think about it, to, to meet some of the people from the Wyoming School Board Association, some of the things that they, they do and they can offer. It's, it's not a long, long trip and it's, we're always back in pretty good shape. I will say this, there was a district last year that took everybody from their board to that meeting. So it would be nice to have more than a couple of us there.
If you, if you would like to attend, you just need to get ahold of Sherry. She has to register by the 14th.
Yeah. What day is that?
Tomorrow. It's, the 25th is Monday. Monday. Monday's 25th, registration by tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. That's all I have, Chairman.
Okay.
I second the motion to escape.
You're not going to let me? I've got one comment. It's a great quote from the best quarterback in the NFL right now, Josh Allen.
Right.
Be the good, do the good.
Yep.
All right.
Where do you go to school?
Say it again.
Where do you go to school?
Go poach. What are you gonna, yeah, so. All right, I have a motion by Dave to adjourn and a second by Brian. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, we are adjourned.